All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ask us all to rise for the pledge of allegiance and Selectmen Timniak, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This is, we have really a one item agenda to discuss a public works project we were looking for a bit more background on in our last meeting, so we postponed it till tonight. So we'll take that up now. And this is from the Director of Public Works, and it was postponed from our November 16th meeting. And this does require the Board of Finance and RTM approval, but Board of Selectmen is meeting in a special meeting tonight, so that we can hear this with the hopes of getting it to the Board of Finance on a timely basis. And this is to hear, consider, and act upon a resolution appropriating $1 million for the cost to the town's comprehensive LED lighting program and authorizing the funding of such appropriation. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
A second, thank you. That is the items before us. Mr. Bowman, can you update us on where we stand?
Basically, the resolution. Well, basically, no, that 500,000 is the grant. The 100,000 then comes from the United Illuminating Company as an on-bill loan, just like all the economic opportunity ones we've done in the past. The 400,000 has to be borrowed from the third-party borrower, which is EMCOR Credit Corporation. It's either borrowed in one or two ways. Either borrowed as a debt and paid off, or you can borrow every year as part of the budget. They'll allow you to do that. So if you don't appropriate it, they'll pull the LED lighting out. I don't know how they do that, but in other words, so they're trashing you to appropriate the money every year if you want to do it that way. Or you can borrow the whole thing upfront, either way. In any case, the first debt service payment would be made within 15 days after borrowing the money. So that if we borrowed the money in January, we still have a debt service payment to be made in January through June. And that's not nothing in the budget for that, so we can appropriate the money in the following year's budget as part of the budget process. So Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen figure out how to get the $3,333, $333 cents a month for six months.
Excuse me, how much was that?
I think it's 3,333. It's 400,000 divided by 48 anyway. That's what's, 3,333, 3,330, all threes. If just one agreement with UI for the whole thing, it would spell out, one agreement with 19 attachments, one for each building, so it'd be spelled out what's going to be done in each building along the way. They're working on that now with their car consultant.
So what other LED projects I've seen in the past, you continue to pay the same UI bill, and the energy efficiency from the LED light, the difference goes to pay off the long-term loan.
Right.
Why is this one different than the others?
The only difference is UI can only provide us $100,000 money on the bill. The other 400,000 comes from a private investor. They subsidize it straight down to zero. However, the savings still will pay for the whole thing, 100 and the 400,000, pretty much. They're projecting savings of 120,000, 125,000 debt service, so it'll pretty well cover the thing. But, you know, we're also saying we can take, it's part of the long-range program we're doing, you know, we voted on already, we're going to come up with a program that says, you know, we'll cover all the expenses from A to Z, roof to basement, and take the savings from the energy projects, we'll cover that part, take the savings from solar and the fuel cell, which will cover the non-energy part. So there'll be enough money there starting July 1st to pay for everything that's going on, basically.
Yeah, let's, if I might just, jumping out of what you said, I think one of the challenges is this is a $500,000 loan. Part of that 100 grand is being added into our bill by UI. All right, now that's a four-year payback also?
Yes.
So the 400,000, we're in essence taking as a loan, so we have to make the payments on that.
Right.
And as much as we all know, there will be savings from LED light installations. I mean, there's certainly enough proof on that. However, whether that happens or not, we pay back 400,000. Now, we borrow the 400,000, we borrow the 100,000 from UI, we get the $500,000 grant, we spend $1 million on installing LED lights. So my first question is, you said that the, we get the money and the payments start 15 days after we get the money.
100,000, right.
Right. When does the installation start for these 17 buildings, you said?
Well-
And when does the installation stop? When do we max our, because we're going to be paying the maximum payment right from the start.
What I would do-
When do we get our mass, maximum discount or reduction in energy costs based on the full installation of the LED lights?
What I would do is try and, you know, start the process installation as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
So that within 30 days, there'll be savings generated.
Right.
It'll only take them a week of building to go through this thing.
Right.
So we're never going to have 100% for the first six months, it's just, but we'll have more than 100% after the first six months type of thing.
Well, and importantly, we do the payback over four years, but from four years to literally forever, or how long do the LED lights last?
They say 15 years, but most people say, let's give them 10, because they don't have anything long-term.
So from years four to 10, we still get savings even though we're technically done paying, so that there's a very positive impact in the later years. But I'm still not clear, how long is it going to take us to install the, start the installation and finish the, what's the project?
About 90 days.
We can do 17 buildings in 90 days?
You know, it's a major company. They're, we're getting prices as we speak from a major company that does this work, so.
Okay.
There'll be more than one crew working, in other words.
So if we start this, we do January, February, March with the installations, maybe through April 15?
Yeah, let's give this 120 days rather than 90.
Okay, so through the end of April.
Yeah.
So you're saying basically on May 1st, we will start getting our max discount?
Yes.
Our max savings, I guess I should say.
Yeah, it should be that 3,333, we're close to it.
Now, the complication is the fiscal year issue. So we'll only get that max saving for May and June in this fiscal year?
Right.
Now, when we get the max savings, how much will that, how much are we saving per month off our bill?
Yeah, it'll be like the $3,333.
So we're basically-
It'll equal the cost.
Right, but not the $1 million that we're installing, and all equals half of that?
No, it'll equal the cost for the payback of 100,000 plus the 400,000. The 500,000 is a grant, so there's no payback on that.
Right, but we're basically in, four years, you're saying, after we install this, we'll save $500,000?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, now we'll be a little bit off, because we're actually going to start paying in February.
Yeah.
When we get the money, because we're going to get all the money first. So it'll be a few months off on that.
Right. In the beginning, it'll be short.
So in terms of this fiscal year, how much money do we have to find?
It's about $12,000, giving me four months rather than three, just a little extra.
So I think you said you thought it was like 3,000 or something?
Yeah, so what's, I don't-
Well, I don't know, I'm dividing 400,000 by 48, and I'm getting 4,166. I just did it quick.
That's what they told me. You're right, it doesn't add up.
I'm just asking.
48 months into, whatever, it's 148, whatever that is.
Okay, do the calculator check?
I'm probably in the-
Use the calculator, I don't have a text message to people. Okay, this is a race.
I know.
Yeah, well- If I had a pen, I'd do it by hand. No, we're doing 400,000, not 500.
We've got $159,000 for a four-year period of $330, those are the total costs we'll pay.
Which isn't enough.
What's $159,000?
That means that can't be the right number.
Yeah, that, actually, that doesn't even, even have, I'm looking at it, it's not making sense. I'm getting 8,300. 400,000 divided by 48.
That makes sense. 12 times 8 is roughly 100,000.
Yeah, because that's not making, right.
We've got to get 100,000 back a year to pay it, 400,000 off, and so that's 8,000 a year, a month? That makes, that makes much more sense.
Yeah, it didn't-
Where did I get, they gave me that number, you're right, it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Ed, what we're going to need, assuming this board votes to approve this, we need all this laid out in writing with the monthly charges, especially the first six months between now and June 30th.
Yeah.
So that that is a more complete presentation going to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
But thank you for doing the math on that.
Yeah.
So 18, 8,000 a month, that's 16,000 for May and June, but we're going to have to pay, and I'd like to see the projected savings per month on this somehow. What's our total electric bill now, and how much will this come down?
It comes down over a year, $120,000, huh? That's 12,000.
Okay, can we, can we have that kind of laid out so we know, here's how much we're paying per month now, and once this is installed, here's how much we will save from it?
Yeah.
So we have some way of tracking that to see that that actually takes place?
Yeah, because we can't track it building by building, you're tracking it on the overall bill, because it's spread out, but it's easier that way.
However, we plan to track that if we can, so this board can see that we actually get the savings at some point. But that means if we start paying this off in February, five times eight is 40,000, so we've got to find-
Right.
Roughly 40,000. But I want, we need an exact number on that. When are we going to take the possession of the money, and when do we have to start paying them back? We need-
Again, if the RTM approves it, when does the closing say 30 days later, I assume, something like that?
Okay, well, we need, let's, what we need is something laid out, a timeline, based on the anticipated RTM approval, so we can see that. And do we have the loan agreement or anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Bond counsel, bond counsel's, and counseling, bond counsel, and then Bob will add it.
Okay, so if we get that also for the backup for this, so that's available, but if we do that, it's between 40 and 48,000. If we start payments in February, that's five months for this fiscal year, that's $48,000.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we'd have to find.
Yes.
Now, did you talk with, our CFO is on vacation this week, so he's not able to be here. But Ed, I believe you talked with our CFO to see, how did you talk about how this would be handled?
Well, he came to know a conclusion on how to handle it, basically.
Okay.
I think he went to talk to the Board of Finance first, perhaps, I don't know. I mean, it's either-
That doesn't, that doesn't help, it passed the Board of Selectmen.
Again, I assumed he was, basically, he was going to take it out of surplus and then-
That is one of the possibilities.
That is one of the possibilities.
That's what he discussed with him, I don't remember mentioning anything else.
Is there a projection right now on our energy line in the budget? Are we tracking under or over for the year right now? Will there be $40,000 in flexibility at the end of the year?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's too early into the year, we only got bills through October, huh?
Yeah, I understand. So one of my, I've done two LED lighting projects in municipal buildings in the past. I have never tackled something along this, I did a library in a small town, and I did town hall, city hall, in the town of Antonia. And I was able to very easily look at the UI bill coming in, look at the number, you know, comprehensive $1 million plan. You know, the savings we were seeing, I mean, it was $700 a month, but that was rolled into the UI bill, and we paid that for three and a half years, and then it was all done, and we take the savings afterward.
And that's what we're doing with a $100,000 piece from UI.
Right.
The challenge, the challenge here is the numbers are getting bigger.
Right.
It's, it's the same-
Exactly.
I think intellectually, we all know that we save money by going to LED bulbs.
Right.
What I was hoping to see is a little bit more detail on the cash flow in the first six months, to make sure that, know what we have to come up with in the current fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Once this is installed, at the moment, I'm going to believe you, Mr. Bowman, but I really want to see, here's what the bill is, and here's what the anticipated savings, and know that we're in essence cash flow neutral going forward, starting July 1st. And I know you've done enough of these, so I'm not-
What I've been waiting for is the UI's agreement, which lays that all out, which they haven't done yet, so.
All right, and-
Ordinarily, that's what I'd be presenting you, the Energy Opportunity Agreement.
Right.
But there is pushing to get it done by the end of the year, or we don't get the 500,000, so.
And, and part of the issue here, again, just to step through for everybody, is this program came up the last minute from UI.
Right.
Mr. Bowman's been scrambling to put this together. We had some LED projects identified, so we're taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
If we don't do this, we lose the $500,000 grant.
Right.
The, the other 500,000, we're paying back to UI for doing, but it's, it's like half price. We'd be giving away 500,000. That's not an excuse-
It's a one-shot deal, basically.
Yeah.
They have money left over from the year, and they said, if you can use it, we'll give it to you. So, okay, we can use it.
So there's not an excuse for the town to do it if the numbers don't work. It is an explanation to us on the board as to why this stuff isn't, the i's aren't dotted and t's aren't crossed on the presentation to us.
I mean, I'm looking at it, and it's 12 times that 8,000, and that's going to be almost $100,000 a year cost going forward, right? And it's about, according to what we got last time, it said it would be about $125,000 a year savings.
And cost, I mean, it's, I mean, 400,000 divided by four is 125,000 a year, so.
So.
So that's a positive.
Right, now I got, so I mean, but so the first year, I mean, the, and then going back to the $100,000, does that get paid off over the four years?
Yeah, that gets paid off on the bill.
100 does also.
Yeah.
All right.
But what's-
So it's really 500,000 that we are basically borrowing and paying back.
Right.
100,000 is just included in the UI bill going forward.
Right, and so that works as like a credit towards what we're saving, is that how they do that?
Well, they'll add that as a charge on the bill, and then our bill will be lower, so it just won't be as lower, if that makes sense.
Okay.
It's, so they, we will save, how much a month? 125, $10,000 a month?
Yeah.
So for 100,000, our five years-
If they're saying you divide 125 by 12, that's, that's what we don't-
2,000, they will increase our bill 2,000 a month, so rather than saving 12,000 a month, we will save 10,000 a month on the bill. That 10,000 will use to pay off the 8,000.
Should go to pay that.
Right. So the numbers work, we'd like to see those laid out, so it's clear, but the numbers do work conceptually with a $2,000 bonus that we immediately start saving.
I would have had that-
But I'm worried, I want to make sure that we have a place to come up with the 48,000 we need to, in the first year, the first, next six months, fiscal year 17, that we're clear on where that's coming from.
I would have had that ready, but I was concentrating on the resolution, didn't think of the detail.
No, and I think that if you read the resolution, I believe the way it was drafted by both, and just to confirm, this was reviewed by bond counsel and our CFO.
Right.
Did you say our town attorney looked at this too?
Yes, Sam looked at it too, yes.
Okay, so key here is that bond counsel signed off on it, so if we were going to borrow the money, we have the ability to do that. If we can find it in some line items in the budget, that would be the other way to do this. The other challenge on this is if we don't bond it, we're then obligating an expense in future budget years, which is not something we can generally do. And the clause that Mr. Bowman referenced was the appropriation clause. The way we can do that legally is what's called an appropriation clause, which says if the town ever didn't appropriate the money, we're not obligated to pay it. Now, everything goes okay, that's not an issue, but legally to do this-
Right.
We cannot obligate future budgets, so we need, the way we obligate future budgets is by bonding something and putting in the debt service and doing that. We can't basically tell somebody, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, or Board of Finance or RTM, three years from now, you have to make this payment. The appropriation clause says, hey, if the town doesn't appropriate this money in your annual budget, then the agreement's over, we don't owe you the money. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it, it's a little bit interesting here that they, and we checked with them, they would allow us to do that?
No, this is their language.
But once the lights are in, what do they, like you said, with-
Well, they, they could take the lights out, that's what-
Yeah, let me, one of the places that the appropriation clause came up is when we basically did a capital lease for golf carts at the golf course.
Okay.
So we have an appropriation clause in that, that basically says, two years from now, if we don't allocate the money to pay the golf course lease numbers, you take the carts back. So that's the easy way the appropriation clause works.
Right.
You're absolutely correct.
Right.
When you're installing LED lights.
It's a little different.
It's a little different come out, but that sounds like that's their risk, not our risk.
Yeah, they're gambling.
Right.
There's other, other companies that do it for things, there's no way they could get the equipment back, doesn't even make sense. But they, they're gambling, AAA community, you know, power company, that will actually do what we're supposed to do.
But from the town standpoint, without the appropriation clause, we would have to bond this. We couldn't plan on taking it out of operating expenses in future years. Now, it may be, and the way this is written, if we, this resolution's written, if we approve this, it will allow us flexibility to make that decision whether we bond it or take it out in the future.
Right.
All right, and-
I will, I will lay out all those figures for you tomorrow and just get them to everybody.
Well, we definitely need to get them to Board of Finance, but we need to copy this board too, so we're-
Yeah, so I'll get them to you tomorrow, I mean-
I would, I would just remind everybody that we are ex-official members of the Board of Finance, so we can go there and comment if what's being presented there isn't what we understood.
Right.
Or wasn't our intent on that. I did take time to call Tom Flynn, Chair of the Board of Finance, today and say that we were considering this tonight. The reason for having this special meeting is that there's a million-dollar project on the table where we get a $500,000 grant, so it's in essence, we're getting $500,000 for free to do this. There's an interest-free loan for the other 500,000. I voiced to him my concerns, but I kind of said our concerns, but forgive me, but I voiced some of my concerns, that we might not have all the answers as tight as we would like them, and kind of ran the concept by him, that if we approve this, we'd be doing this to get it to the Board of Finance, to give us more time to get these answers, because if we vote it down, we lose a million dollars, project, something that we plan to do eventually.
Right.
So that it, the idea, I said, I didn't want him surprised, and I didn't want the Board of Finance upset that perhaps we pass something, if it's our choice to do that, that might not be as tight as what we would normally do to them.
Okay.
And to make sure he clearly understood that we were doing that to buy ourselves more time, because this came up the last minute, we had a glitch with our CFO being on vacation, Ed's been scrambling to put all this together, and we just couldn't get it all done as fast as we would like. But we do have to have it tight for the Board of Finance, because they're not going to send it to the RTM unless it's the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so we've got to have that.
That'll be done tomorrow. It's not a time-consuming thing, it's just, it's 7 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
I mean, I have the information on the computer, but I didn't realize we're looking for that information tonight.
I've been talking for a bit, I don't, I don't mean to-
Yeah, no.
I believe in the concept, I've seen it work, the LED lights absolutely make sense. I have a number I just put on the paper. After we pay off the four years, if the life is another six years long, I have that at $864,000 in savings, you know, in years four through 10.
Four through 10, yep.
And then anything after 10 is obviously, you just add to that. So I'm comfortable with the concept, I do understand the time constraints and the numbers not being tight tonight, I'm willing to pass it forward, again, provided-
We can look at it tomorrow, and they'll look at it, the Board of Finance, and-
Yeah, no problem.
And I think that certainly if there's anything that comes back in numbers that's not what we understood tonight-
Right.
That, that we let the Board of Finance know, so that we can-
Just blame me, that's all.
No, I have another, is it a million dollars? We have to do a million dollars?
No, it's up to, up to a million.
It's up to a million.
But that's why we add it, it's not just LED lighting and other energy conservation measures, so if we don't have a million dollar, we can add, like the library, we have a project already approved by the, the whole town, but they didn't, we didn't have the loan. So if we have extra money, we could go back and do the library, which everybody's already approved two years ago.
But the library project was not LED lights, that was an energy management project?
Right, right.
So that's why it says-
They already have it.
And other energy management project. I just want to be clear that there's LED lighting, and then the additional projects you're talking about, some of them, what is our estimate for the LED lighting?
That LED, we don't know yet. The LED lighting is somewhere in the 880,000, something like that, but it's not finalized. That's why the million dollars is there, and that's why the extra language, the, you know, other projects.
So does, is the half a million dollars from UI the grant? Is that contingent upon us taking a million? Can we take 700,000 and do the 100,000 in UI, the half a million dollar in grant, and then $200,000 deal with EMCOR Credit?
Well, I think it's, it's all best on the total, if it's 800,000, you have 500,000 grant, 100 UI money and 200 EMCOR, I mean, depends on the total, you back it up backwards.
All right, so UI's in for the grant-
And the 100,000.
And the 100,000.
And the interest subsidy.
So that puts us at 600,000, and then we can shave off anything we want from EMCOR if we want to lower the total debt obligation we have from the town.
Yeah, until we know what we're going to, the cost, our target.
I think the, what we're saying is this will all be, the LED savings will all be installed in 90 days, so we'll achieve that. Any of the other energy management projects we do outside that 90-day window, because that would be additional savings that we're not planning on to help pay this back. If we didn't do those and didn't spend the money, we could then use that and as Selectmen Timniak suggested, just frankly, pay back the 400,000 sooner, like, well, we borrowed 400,000, we're giving you $100,000 back because we didn't spend that.
You mean, out of the grant money?
Out of the loan.
No, out of the loan.
Yeah, the loan.
Oh, EMCOR.
The loan is the only stuff we have to pay back.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if perchance, we didn't spend all 1 million dollars.
Yeah, you, yes, you could do that, sure.
Okay.
No, I understand what you're saying.
We got the LED project done, we said, that's enough, we're not doing the other projects. For some, whatever reason we chose, we would have the money already given to us in the loan.
Right. We already have another grant from the library.
Since it's interest, since it's an interest-free loan, we either pay it back or, you know-
Or use it for one of the projects.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's...
But I think Ed is proposing that we use it for other energy management projects after we're done with the LED lights, because there's no time differential.
No.
Once we get the LED lights done, we're saving the max that we're planning on saving.
See, and the 500,000...
We can save more.
Right.
But that's the max that we need to make this program work.
And the 500,000 grant is 50% of the total cost. So with 900,000, you get 450,000 in the grant.
Okay, so they reduce the grant amount.
It's a 50% grant, or whatever the actual cost is. We estimated at $1 million to get it as high as we could.
Now, when do we go back and show them the documentation that it adds up to a million, or...
We're doing that right now. As we speak, our contractor, our energy consultant, has been doing that.
Okay.
So he's meeting with UI.
Given, it would be nice to have that all laid out with projects adding up to $1 million. When will we have that piece of information? Because that would be solid backup for this too.
I will find out tomorrow.
Okay.
And I can give you the summary. I don't know if I can give you the...
All right.
Tomorrow, I can't give you the project-by-project detail.
Because I think that's the other piece of backup that certainly this board would like, but assuming we go forward with this, the Board of Finance definitely needs that.
I'm not sure it could be done that quick. I mean, part of the thing is getting that work, and that's not that easy. UI has to sign off on it.
Okay.
So we go building by building the UI with our assumptions, and they do an engineering evaluation.
Can we get some sort of estimate of that, since there are -- you mentioned 17 buildings?
19, actually.
19? Can we get some sort of estimate by building to show what the LED was? Obviously subject to finalization and further definition.
I'm sure we'd get that from Earth Corps, subject to UI approval, yes.
Yep. Okay. Is there anything else this board would like to see for backup to help support this going on to the Board of Finance?
No. If we fell short of $1 million at the 960 range, $960,000, could that savings be put towards this year's budget to pay off the loan if we didn't spend the entire...
You're not spending it. Yeah, you're paying it back ahead of time, that's all.
So that, if we fell short by whatever number, we could technically take that and pay it in this year's, and we won't have to worry about the line item?
Yeah.
Right.
But we won't know that till later in the year.
Right.
So, good thought, though.
And we will try and maximize it.
I do understand that as well. Again, I'll say that I'm comfortable with the concept. I've seen the LED program work, and I've actually tangibly seen it save money. I believe in it in the long run. And years four through 10 appear to show an $864,000 savings, which is real money in the municipal world.
Yep. All right. Any further questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Any questions in the public? Seeing none. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. What I would ask is that if any questions do come up, as you're seeing some of the handouts back from Mr. Bowman...
Yep.
Please forward them to me. I will collect those and forward those on to the Board of Finance, so they have this, plus any outstanding questions we have.
If they're forwarded to me, so I'll be ready to answer them.
Yep. We'll do that, too.
Sounds like a good idea.
All right. Mr. Bowman, thank you. Got some work to do between now and December 6th.
Between tomorrow and tonight and tomorrow.
That, too. That, too. All right. This is a special meeting. This was the only item on the agenda. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I want to thank my colleagues for being flexible enough to come here on a special meeting this late on a rainy night to get this done, so we can potentially get a million-dollar project done for the town by the end of the year. Thank you.
Great.